All right. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 21st, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WHCA. And as we start all meetings, if you could please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I need these chairs, I can move them.
Holy leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we have a fairly light agenda. We were going to use this meeting simply for the superintendent to present the preliminary budget to the school committee, but we did, as we always do, sneak a few more things onto the agenda. So we're going to do the budget presentation, review, discussion first, and then we do have a few other things from there.
So thanks, Chris. Mr. DeGravio is on his way.
Okay, great.
Just to let you know. And if you give me, allow me to just jump around a little bit before we get to the budget.
How would you want to do it?
I'd like to do the food services increase, John, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Good evening. The school lunch or food service pay rate calculation is with documents in your packet. This is where we're going to be asking to take the substitute or the lowest paid person on the, on the, on the pay scale at food services. Right now it's at $14.25 an hour, and I'm asking to boost that up to $15 an hour to match the Massachusetts minimum wage, which is coming into effect on January 1st. And then that 75 cents also, to kind of spread that 75 cents across the entire table, to give it to everyone that's working in the food service. Just it's difficult to retain people. We've got some very talented people and that like to give that as a, as a raise. And the document in front of you shows you how much the payroll amounts would be. The increase would be $17,685 for this fiscal year and just for the rest of the year, if it went, it's $10,316.25. So that's, the request is to boost the, the lowest paid person to $15 an hour and then spread that 75 cents increase throughout the entire table.
And John, the food services budget is all self-funded?
It is self-funded, but, and there's a significant amount of money in retained earnings in, in that fund.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
To increase the 75 cents, 75 cents. Whoa, 75 cents.
They didn't get excited right there.
75 cents per hour.
They would like that.
As presented, so.
Motion and second.
Okay. Who was the second?
I'm the second.
All right. Fantastic. Great. Yes.
Discussion. The number of steps, is that already within the contract?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? You know.
Thank you. So we're going to move right into the preliminary budget presentation discussion. Michelle, if Mr. Kane wants the presentation, you can come grab it. I made, I made some copies for folks. If, if you want to look through it in your drive, I edited this afternoon. This is really a prelim budget. It's a snapshot right now for the committee. We talked last year at budget subcommittee, and the budget subcommittee kind of struggled and said, you know, we can't really discuss the budget until the full committee gets an out, or gets it, gets a snapshot, gets an idea of where we're at. And then after we presented the budget last year, talking to the boards of selectmen and FinCom, they wanted some early information to start formulating their budgets based upon some of our projections. So a lot of this is, is projection, and I just wanted to thank and really shout out to John, because he's done a lot of this work. As we have rebuilt Munis to work now, he's now rebuilding Munis to work for this budget cycle. So double effort because of what happened in, in July. When we talked last year, this would have been a much easier process, I think, for us if we didn't have to rebuild while we were living in, in the documents or in, in the Munis world itself. So preliminary presentation, this telling the public, this isn't set in stone. This is where we're projecting now, and as we all know, we get to the final budget in March. So numbers here are, are there as projections, and I'll explain some of the reasons for where we get. So first page is really the mission statement. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District is committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. School committee focus areas last year were tuition-free, full-day kindergarten, one-to-one personal device for each student, and robust related arts. We knew we were able to put two of those three things in this year's FY '23 budget. School committee focus areas for '23-'24: school start times, innovation pathways in early college, a robust K-8 related arts program, and culture and climate. Some of these are in effect into this budget. Some of these necessarily don't affect our, our budget overall. Culture and climate and innovation pathways in college. The high school principal is working on the pathways, and we are actually in a grant program with Commonwealth to bring innovation pathways to our school. Budget proposal goals and purpose: support students' educational needs and the district operational needs, maintain current staffing levels pre-K-12, continue to address academic, social, and emotional regression due to COVID-19, provide special education programs to retain students in district, provide English learners the support they need for success, address school start times, add a robust K-8 related arts. And that was the proposal that was discussed this summer. Our enrollment trends. As you can see, from 2017, we had 3903 students. In 2022, we have, we had 3556. This year, we're projected at 3541. Now, that's the number we submit to the state in October. Then the state will then issue what we can use for assessments. These are students that are involved in our, in our school system, but the state will then weed out who are choice students, that we are paying for other districts, so on and so forth. But this is the number that we submitted to DESI October 1st. So we didn't see that, that decline that we have seen in the past, and this goes to our NESDAQ attendance report that I shared at the beginning of the year. We seem to have leveled off. We're not going to see that dip anymore. We seem to have leveled off. Budget assumptions, and these are important because they are assumptions right now. Salaries and expenses are up 3%. That's not necessarily an accurate number. John has not been able to roll over our projected salaries for fiscal '24 yet. That's a work in progress. Hold harmless, a 5% increase to the town's required contributions. Non-mandated busing is pretty much not an assumption. It's the numbers that he has right now, as calculated as of today. The town split right now, based on the projected number of students that we have enrolled, is a 60.61% to Whitman, a 39.39% to Hanson. It's hypothetical because we don't have the solids yet. Debt, as per assumptions in our budget packet, and John's put those numbers together, a 14% increase in tuitions for sped out of district placement to private schools. Now, let me explain that a little bit. The operation, the Operational Services Division, OSD, for the Commonwealth, for the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, has set a 14% inflation factor for MGL-approved private special education program tuitions for purchase by cities and towns beginning, beginning July 1st, 2023. That's a $650,000 increase to our budget right now. Okay? I've been on the phone and email with Josh Cutler and Allison Sullivan to see what we can do about that. Okay? So that's in the works. There is nothing that is set in stone, but that's a projection right now, and I have to include that in this year's budget. Okay? So you see a little bump in, in the numbers as we get through this. Hopefully by February, we'll have more solid numbers, but this affects us to the tune of about $650,000, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, but nothing more than $10,000 either way. That was a hit to the gut.
Jeff, can you just elaborate that that's, those are rates that these out-of-district private schools that our students are attending, that they're authorized to increase those rates that they assess us?
Correct. Yes, correct. So let me just give you.
The state's allowing them.
Correct. So in FY '11, the increase was 0.75%. FY '20 was 1.63. FY '21 was 2.72. FY '22 was 2.26. FY '23 was 2.54. John put in 2.5. It's 14. So that needs to go out there to folks, and again, I'm working with Allison and Josh. They've been very receptive. They didn't hear that prior to me contacting them, but I'm sure more superintendents are going to be up speaking about this. Even if it gets cut in half, it, it will affect our, you know, it'll decrease our numbers right now. So when we get to that next page, I just wanted to be clear, this is, this isn't an influx of we're adding $650,000 worth of staff, anything. This is coming from the state. Now, the benefit I see is if in FY '25, our circuit breaker numbers should be higher if we end up incorporating the $650,000, depending on where it is. But as, as you all know, with circuit breaker, there's a, there's a, there's an amount over a certain amount that they'll fund. Depending on that amount, we'll recover some of these funds. This is a work in progress, and that's why I say it's preliminary, because it's, it came out late October to us, been back and forth, and now it seems like it's sticking. Mr. Cutler offered a conference call with someone from DESI's finance to talk specifically to John and I about this and explain it and see if there's any relief. The only relief I see is if the legislature kind of puts a kibosh on this and, and slows it down in the governor's budget. So we, this is a projection. This is in the budget, the, the budget numbers that I'm presenting on the next page. So, yes, Frank?
Quick question. But even if the circuit breaker monies, it's an average, so the bar to Kane is going to go up, because I would assume this is affecting 351 districts.
Yes.
Cities and towns.
So it depends on, on how the state plays it. You know, they'll, you know, to minimize that cost, you're right. So I always use an average of $40,000 is the amount. So $40,000 is what the district alone and everything over 40. So the state might just say, now it's 60, or now it's 75. Anything over that, well, those numbers, they, they, they work around. I'm not going to say manipulate, but they work around. But this is a big increase.
And that's 75 cents on the dollar?
What, circuit breaker? Circuit breaker now is, John, do we know an average number? If you pull that, what was circuit breaker reimbursed at? We know transportation, reimbursable transportation was 75 cents on the dollar, and that's new this year. But I don't know the, the average off the top of my head, what they're reimbursing.
Pretty sure it was, once you hit that number, 75 cents.
It was something like that.
75%.
So it could be.
Okay.
So again, this is something to watch. I wanted to share this with you here and, and working on that. So the next page is, is the bottom line number that everybody wants to see. Fiscal year from '15 to '24. So I'm looking at a $60,984,583 budget as of today, December 21st, which is a 4.19% increase overall. One of the tasks that we talked at budget subcommittee last year is we'd like to keep or project a 3% increase to the school budget every year, which we thought as a budget subcommittee was relatively fair. Looking at the increases that we've had since 2015, in '15, we had a 1.67% increase to our overall budget. The next year was a 0.82%. Then we get to the threes. We did have a 5.52% increase in FY '21. We then came back with a 2.67% and then a 2.98%. If we eliminate that 650, we're at three. So when we tried to build the budget to support the needs, the fiscal needs and the emotional, everything around our students, we have the towns in our sights of what can be affordable, and a 3% increase to our budget didn't seem outrageous. We'll do everything we can to try to look where we can move things around, see where these numbers flesh out by, by March 17th, when we have to vote this budget. But this is the number that I'm at right now, if we had to do what we have to do with projections. There are some moving parts to this as we go forward. So the next page is additional work that we have to do. Plan on working with the budget subcommittee on presentation for the budget, February 1st, which is the public hearing. Chris and I just spoke. We'd like to have two meetings in, in January to discuss how to present, and that formal presentation will have all the documents, the charts, things like that for the public. We'll be working on that in, in the month of January. Prepare all the budget documents for public hearing, using the ESER III funding so we can move people that we feel are essential into the FY '24, FY '25 budget as a refresher. By September of 2024, ESER goes away. So we need to expend those funds, and they are non-renewable at this point. I don't know what the Fed will do. There has been some talk that they might extend it to FY '26, but right now I'm not seeing anything like that. Update assumptions based on actual costs, and again, that's John's area to move everyone with projected payrolls for next year, now that we are very close to solidifying all three B, C, and D units. We'll be discussing that at the January meeting. Unit A moving over. Again, we have 600, 500 to 550, give or take employees, 600 including coaches. All of those staff members have to be reloaded in manually right now. It's not just a push a button and everybody is refreshed. And then solidify expenses related to our instructional support needs. We are looking at our, our instructional support staff to make sure we're adequately supplying our students with what they need, however, making sure that we don't have in excess of instructional support staff. Because when we had, when we went through the two COVID years, we really boosted our support staff due to the needs, unique needs of kids, especially in school and when they were remote. The timeline I'm proposing right now is tonight as a, as a preliminary presentation. January 11th is our next school committee. We can talk budget, or it can just be a, a general meeting. January 12th is our joint meeting with the both boards from both communities. February 1st is our public hearing. February 15th is our next school committee meeting in February. March 1st is the governor's, the governor's budget is released publicly, which usually it's released the last week of January. We won't have accurate numbers from the governor's budget till March, which puts us in a, in a bind a little. I'm proposing March 8th as a school committee meeting. March 15th is another school committee meeting. March 16th is the deadline to submit to the towns. That's 45 days prior to town meeting. I'm looking at an April 5th school committee meeting, an April 25th school committee meeting prior to town meeting if needed, and then May 1st town meeting votes. So we can add meetings in, we can move things around, but that's the timeline I see from past practice of the amount of meetings we may need or we may not need, based upon how much work we can get done in the month of February and what the governor's budget looks like, and feedback from the two communities of what they can, what they have projected in their budgets. I knew, I did read an article in the, in the Whitman, in the Express. Whitman's looking at their, their budget already. I haven't seen, we haven't had formal conversations with the town administrators yet about where they are, what their projections are. I assume those will be coming after we meet with them in January. So this is a prelim. John has done all the documents. They are in your packet. We weren't going to go through all the documents tonight, because they are there for you to, to look at over the next couple of weeks, ask questions when we have our, our joint meeting. But I'd like John to come up and explain how we, and refresh the committee, how we got our non-mandated calculations, which did affect our reimbursement rates last year, and lower the cost of our non-mandated transportation to both towns, and then go over the assessments towards the end. So John, and I gave John a, a separate mic, so you hopefully can all hear him.
Thank you. So this, there's 21 documents. There'll be more, but this is just for the preliminary reports. Excuse me. So I mean, we can go over any document you want, but the, the assessment methodologies start in document 18, which is in the back of the packet, if you have it in paper, or towards the end, if you're looking at it online in the, in the Google Drive. And I have it in paper because I like paper, and let's see, we are. So document 18 is, I've numbered all the documents. Document 18 is the busing analysis for fiscal year '24, and I want to make sure that I'm following along with the presentation instead of just reading through it here. So step one is to, we're going to be using the mileage method this, this year, and we, that's what we talked about at the last February, I think it was, which is actual miles from the school for each student. So if you look in the column, the top left of document number 18, where it says FY '24 mandated busing, it has miles from school for each, each school, and then the total number of students, and there's a mileage number there, and then a student number. Then below that, there's a non-mandated busing. These are actual students, actual addresses, and that's the, the total miles from, from school for the non-mandated busing people, and the total number of students there. So the grand total of all the mileage and the grand total of students is in row Q, and then the breakout is R and S. So the total mandated busing is 86% of the total, and the total non-mandated busing is 13.67, 64, sorry, for 100%. So you, that's how you come up with the expense allocation method of how, how to do it. You move up to the reference letter number T, letter T, and those are the projected transportation salaries, T and U, and the contracted services for fiscal year '24 as of today. Obviously, that can change if those costs change. I don't think they will, but they may. So that's $2 million altogether. You take the percentages that we just determined in R and S. You take those percentages in V and W, and then you break it out by dollars in X and Y, and then I tried to put a reference letter so I could, you could follow along. And then the split of mandated busing costs are in Z and in double A. Again, a hypothetical, 60.61 and 39.39. We won't know what those, that split is until we, the, the DESI, you know, comes out with the official numbers. Again, it was in January, so it's probably going to be February with the governor's budget or March. And then the actual split of the non-mandated costs. So, and then the, from the bottom right is what we would, you know, hypothetically get in a state reimbursement based on everything that we did before the, before, above, which is you take the $139,000 in reimbursable transportation salaries, you take the contracted services, you minus out what then, what we've assessed to Whitman and Hanson, which would be 222,526.76 to Whitman under this hypothetical scenario, and Hanson would be 55,451.40. You come up with 1.7 million for reimbursement, reimbursable expenses, and then the, I'm just, I came up with a number of 85% state reimbursement for fiscal year '25. Again, I just came up with that percentage. We would get 1.495 million from the state based on an 85% reimbursement rate. The reimbursement rate has been higher recently, but it's been lower, and so I'm starting with the number.
We didn't want to put a rate in that was too high. If we got 93% this year, if we put 93% and it came back at 80%, our budget would be off when we came forward. So it's better that, I'm pretty certain, I think both of us are pretty certain, it's not going to go below 85%. I'm hoping it goes back to the 96% we got this year. So that would affect this as well. But again, we wanted to keep it somewhere in the middle without overprojecting and then coming up short when we, when we finalize this, this document.
Wasn't too many years ago, we had to project 65%.
Correct. Absolutely. That's why I'm.
That was only three, four years ago.
That's why I'm hesitant right now. It's been really good the past couple of years, and I know some people in town are saying, well, you got 96, put 96 there. But if it comes in at 88, it's, it's a dramatic difference. It's, it's quite a bit of money, so.
John, you mentioned we're using the mileage method this year, so I see the breakout. But we talked about mileage method the last year. Did we use this method, mileage method, last year?
We did.
Okay. Okay. And then I'm just looking at the, the enrollment count. So we have 30, 3100 students. I know we just saw the enrollment is 3,500. So just the way that my brain thinks and my own background of accounting is tying numbers out, so I'm always thinking back to our enrollment number. So is it possible to see what those other 400 students are in relation to these, the busing here? Like, are, are we accounting for every student is really what I'm asking for?
As far as busing right now?
Yes.
So, so Karen, in August this year, put every eligible student on a bus. Not every student in district is eligible for either non-mandated or mandated transportation.
And what would they be classified as? Are they like a walker?
Walker, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what we're looking at in our transportation guidelines, because there's a differential in both towns in how walkers are classified right now.
Okay. So I guess my request is, is it possible to get a comprehensive report of, sort of just a summary?
Yes.
Of, you know, all students and what they're, how they get to school?
Correct. I got you. So yeah, I, I hear you on that, and that's the reason why we're looking at our guidelines, because it's different in both towns, like, and we had talked about, and I'm not going to go off on a tangent, but Whitman has crossing guards, Hanson does not. So people in Whitman walk because there's crossing guards, and people in Hanson do not.
Yeah. Interesting information piece.
That will come out, absolutely. It's a good question.
Okay.
So last year, we were able to use the mileage method?
Correct.
And I know there was some discussion about trying to apply, apply years back.
You were able to, you, you were able to go back one year.
So I was able to get the mileage method on fiscal year '21's numbers, which we got in fiscal year '22.
And how much of a dollar and cents difference was that?
It was substantial. I don't have it in front of me. It was 300,000.
Okay. Now, towns had already paid for that busing. Did we pay the towns back the same as we did when we had the COVID relief, when we weren't running buses? What did we do with the money?
It's in the general fund, as a general fund revenue to, to the district in fiscal year '22.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I remember us looking at that line somewhere in the budget some time ago.
Because I know when COVID happened, when we stopped busing, I forget exactly the dollar amount, but I know we gave a credit back to the towns for the monies that was never spent. You know, so if the money wasn't spent, I'm just asking, would we, you know, seeing that the money's in the general fund, it would end up going, rolling into E and D? Would we, you know, revert that back to the towns?
I'm not sure. And I, I don't know.
If you, document number two is the revenue detail. So fiscal year '22's actuals, again, not audited, but as of right now, we've got 1.289 million, 1289,350, and I think we were going to get 800 something, so it's 375 more. And it, once it goes, this, this revenue has to go and be certified as E and D, but then after that, it would be, I would assume it would be up to the school committee of what, what to do.
And perhaps we put that in a future agenda?
We haven't certified E and D yet either.
No, 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 in a future agenda.
Then the future agenda item is?
What to do with the excess funds that were received due to the recalculation of busing?
Reimbursement.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it might make sense to just include that in part of the overall budget conversation, because there's probably a lot of moving parts in terms of that, but we can do kind of whatever. That would be my suggestion, is just put it as part of the budget conversation. Yes?
Just another follow-up question, John, if I may. So just to review, so we're adding up the total miles from school, and I know at the bottom on line R and S, you have a split of a percentage of 86% and 13% for mandated busing and non-mandated busing, based on the miles. Now, I'm just trying to understand how that translates to the right-hand side in the column. So then the price of the transportation is then split out by that percentage.
Yes.
And then when it gets to the point of line Z in AA, the split of the mandated busing costs to the towns, then we're using the district-wide population percentage of 60% and 39%. So I guess I'm confused, because we're calculating a certain mileage percent breakout, but then when it comes to assessing the towns, we're defaulting to the 60-40 pupil percent?
That's in the agreement. In the regional agreement, so.
In the regional agreement.
Mandated busing will be split up according to the population of the towns.
Okay. And then the next lines, BB and CC, non-mandated busing costs.
Those are actuals.
We're reverting to actuals. Is that in the regional agreement?
No.
Okay. So is it possible that the non-mandated busing costs could be split differently based on 60-40% also? It seems odd to me that we're, we've got two costs, mandated and non-mandated, and yet we're using different determinations on how to split those costs.
Yeah, I think you made the exact same point last year. So, I mean, I think what we did was, when we looked at it, I think that was, we defaulted to the interpretation of the regional agreement in terms of the towns were each responsible for their non-mandated busing costs, so if the.
But that's based on mileage. You could say your non-mandated cost based on 60-40 district-wide pupil split.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about it over here. You know, at some point, it could potentially change. So I think that's the, the question that ties back to the interpretation of the regional agreement, because again, we went through this. I remember vividly, because. agreement, because, again, we went through this, I remember vividly, because one town decided to put it on the warrant a certain way, and another town decided to do it another way. So again, like, to me, this is not a new conversation, it's one we have every year. So we can continue to ask questions and revisit it.
Yeah, it's important because it certainly appears like one, depending on the method used, one town is at a disadvantage. So Whitman's paying 60-40 of the mandated, 60%, and then when it comes to non-mandated, Whitman is paying 80%.
I think, and I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I thought it was spelled out very clearly that mandated was split as per the population split, and that each town would pay their portion of non-mandated busing.
That's the conversation we had last year, yes.
And we're talking regional agreement today. Hey, how about that?
If we want to bring that, maybe that is a topic to revisit as part of the regional agreement. But yes. I think the, again, I'm going back to a year ago, we can probably just pull up the meetings and all watch the conversation, because I think we all had it at least once, maybe two years in a row. But I think it was pretty clear that the understanding, practice, and intent was that as part of the regional agreement, that each town was responsible for their non-mandated student costs. That was kind of where we left it. Now, again, if we want to revisit that and talk about that again, we certainly can, but I think that was kind of how we interpreted it. And I remember both select boards, selectmen and selectboards, kind of coming to the same conclusion, so. We can give us open eye. I think one of the key takeaways here, though, before we kind of get really deep into the weeds, I think, important to note, right, so if I'm reading this right, the overall transportation budget for FY '24 is projected to be about 2 million, call it 38,000. And the key is, using this mileage-based methodology, you know, we're expecting a reimbursement of about 1.75, 1.76 million, right? If that's-
That'll be reimbursable, 85% of that.
Exactly. So, you know, that, this, you know, when we talk about regional districts, if you have a 2 million, little more than 2 million dollar cost, and you can get 1.7 plus back, you know, that is a, that is a, it wouldn't be nice to get all 2 million back, but 1.7 is a step in the right direction in terms of that reimbursement.
It's 85% of the 1.7.
Exactly.
It's about 1.5.
Exactly, yeah. So it is a good chunk that we do get back for the transportation.
Considering if you're in a bordering town that's not in a region, they're paying the whole bill.
Well, parents are paying it. Parents, in my town, you pay to go ride the bus. It's a bus pass. So I don't know if it's in the actual budget itself, or if it's just self-funded by parents.
I believe Abington, they write the check, school districts.
What do you want to go next?
And just to wrap up, again, on document number two, the general fund revenue detail based on these assumptions, which are, you know, it's obviously subject to change. Hanson's operating assessment in the far-right column, according to these assumptions, would be going up 7.88%. Whitman's operating assessment would be going up 8.52%. And you see the column on the right is all the differences and increases over last year, or decreases, as the case may be. The total is, like, as the superintendent said, 2.448 for an increase overall, or 4.19%.
Is that based on level services, or is that with anything in addition?
That's with the $650,000 increase right now?
For sped?
For sped, yeah. And then level services with the inclusion of trying to move, and this is why this is preliminary, seeing based upon my retirees, moving my staff that is paid by ESER into the general fund, that we, and George's curriculum. He won't let me forget curriculum. We cut some of that last year. So you're not getting additional staff members, we're maintaining where we are and utilizing the LEA budget as best we can for deferring the cost of retirees and bringing our staff in from ESER. Remember, through ESER, we paid for a few interventionists and EL teachers. And again, refreshing your memories, our EL population is now close to 190, where five years ago, we were in the 20s to 30s. It's not, it's not going away, and we need to provide them services. This will be broken out more over the next month, too, as well. So you'll see where we have people moving here and there. But basically, this is a level service budget with the 650.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, Chris?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, both audibly and visually. It's very easy to follow, the number of the pages and the lines and everything, I really appreciate that.
And just to let the committee know, all this will be uploaded probably tomorrow to the website, so folks can see. But we didn't want to share that until you folks saw it, and this gives now the budget subcommittee some opportunity to work with me and John to fine-tune where we're at, answer some prepared questions that we can provide you the answers to moving forward.
So the two and a half million dollar question, then, would be kind of what's in the two and a half million dollar increase? So is that, I know we're just kind of getting some of this for the first time and kind of going through that, but is that articulated within kind of, you know, there's the 650 here, and this is kind of what we're doing for curriculum? Is that in one of these, kind of broken out, or like, how would we kind of get to, I think the spirit of Fred's question of, you know, what's level services and kind of what are we adding, and what's driving some of those increases? Because we got something, right, but how do we kind of get, you know, we got the accountant too, right? At least the way I'm thinking of it, same way, is kind of how do we kind of reconcile back to that two and a half million increase? Is there, is that in here somewhere?
So on the summary page, page one, it's just, it has the general fund revenues and general fund expenditures, and then it says total new initiatives at the bottom, 540,000 of the 2 million.
And that stock number-
Sorry, it looks like this.
One, thank you, sorry, I have them all open. Yep.
$300,000 is the curriculum update that George was talking about, and he can speak to that. And then $240,000 is a placeholder for transportation realignment. Again, that would, under this hypothetical scenario, that would come from E and D. But George wanted to talk about that.
So I know the superintendent keeps referring to this as George's curriculum. I would think it's the students of the district's curriculum. I would also like to refresh your memory that this is actually level service because the $300,000 was cut from it last year during the budget. We were able to get our curriculum up to 525,000 as a yearly rollover, which was already established in the budget. That was taken away, and we slashed 300,000 last year. We did that because there were ESER funds, and we also did that because we had to do it as part of what I was told we had to do. So as a good doobie, we did that. When you replace that, we are still trying to get on a curriculum cycle that is part of the budget yearly. And in order to do that and maintain the different cycles of curriculum that we need to buy, that needs to come back. I will say that what's on the docket out there would be the K-8 robust related arts that we talked about in the summer. And if you were to do that on a shoestring with a virtual Spanish offering and K-8 robotics, that would be 100, approximately $160,000 right there. And then we also have this year, a series of things that need to be done at the high school, because they have their AP books, and they have their psychology books and things that need to be replaced, not only for dual enrollment purposes, but also for what the college board asks you to do in order to have their classes. We are also at over $100,000 yearly in just manipulatives for our programs. So when we look at, again, what's on the horizon for curriculum, we have a middle school curriculum project that's going for math, 5 to 8. I'll say that this year, we had a grant. And so if we can put this back into the budget, then we're not doing this every year by slashing, moving, slashing, moving. What we're now doing is saying, how do we work with the funds we have in order to make sure we can offer the curriculum that our students need? So that is, this is not an addition. This is a level service. I'm sure there'll be people on this school committee who say that that's not, but this is a level service because it once was there.
So I just wanted to add, and the reason I refer to George is because he's been masterful at putting together this package over, we talked three, four years ago about math curriculum and ELA curriculum in the elementarys. We had none. We had none. Now he's been able to build the elementary curriculum and now a middle school curriculum. We had none. So it's equitable across the board for both towns and for all our kids. As they mature up, they have something similar.
We will, for the first time next year, also have Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry curriculum that once is open source, but the manipulatives aren't, so that now we can actually restructure according to guidelines for now entering the high school. So it is affecting all levels of students. Hillary, I think you had a question?
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so it is something we built up, and we've really tried to push forward with the committee and the committee support and the town support, because our students deserve this piece, and we're seeing benefits to the curriculum that they have. And the interventions that we put in place this year with Power Block, we can actually see data where kids have moved grade level, kids that have been above grade level are getting, are achieving more based upon what we've put in place since 2019, so. And Hillary, you have a question?
So, two things. So I think I agree with you, George, although I don't think you said it this way, but I think it's disingenuous to put this curriculum update into a new initiative if we're just replacing something that we got rid of. And so I think that I would argue that we move that and put it somewhere else. I know that technically, it's an addition, but we're not adding anything. And I think that that is important to be noted, that we're not actually adding anything. Is that accurate?
Sure.
I also would like to see projections on, you know, we had talked about the K-8 related arts, and one of the things that we talked about was online Spanish, like, and we talked about how that possibly was the cheapest option and something that could work. I'd like to see projections for that, and I don't know if that's through the budget subcommittee.
Could you just say you have?
Yes.
Is it, is it within this 300?
No, no, but he just verbally-
No, but I could-
You did verbally, but I mean, I'd like to see it like in the budget.
Sure, it's $103,400 in order to have one Spanish teacher to share both schools for support, and that would also allow the adoption of Spanish through Ingenuity at both middle schools. The beautiful thing about that is, is that I would pay the extra $1,200 because that would get you the whole, every single subject at Ingenuity, which is an online platform course for both schools. So it's only $1,200 more to get every single course they offer. And that would be the springboard, as we discussed in August, to say, well, if it works for virtual Spanish, and virtual Spanish being, students would have, if I can refresh your memory, students would have the ability to take it on their own time with dedicated support from one Spanish teacher that we would hire on a split schedule to go to both middle schools, and then offer a culture class in 6th grade at one school and 7th grade on another, so there's no scheduling conflicts. You could do that. And that price would be $103,400. We then talked about, in order to bring in robotics through the elementary teachers, no, no additional staff, but through the librarian aides at the elementary school, we would probably, and I changed the company because we did research, we'd probably go through the company called Sphero, which I already have a quote for, which would be somewhere in the ballpark of $55,000. That ballpark would bring you to the roughly $158,400 for the whole package. There is process that we, if the school committee decides to just do one or the other, they could, that would go into the overall budget as we project the cycle for curriculum. Because once you buy the Sphero or the robotics piece, it's not a yearly cost after that. So you would own it for the eight to 10 years of life that it has before you had to do something else.
Fred and then Chris, yeah?
Okay. And a couple of things to go around. So that's $50,000.
Yep.
And it's got a shelf life of eight to 10 years?
Correct.
I would think that'd be a good E and D investment there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one and done. It's not, it's not rolling over. The curriculum update, will we get to a point where we're paying for curriculum, and now that we have our curriculum, so now that we have that eight to 10 years, and, you know, other than consumables? No, not, in this day and age, to be honest with you, different than when you and I went to school, is that most of the digital learning is online, so that continually changes with the frameworks, and that continually changes what's in education. So you're looking at about a push for every six years. So at every six years, you're looking at the refresh of that cycle. So if we look at the curriculum associates, which is what we have in K-5 and hopefully 6 to 8 for math, we are entering year five next year, whereas in HMH or Houghton Mifflin, where we have inter reading, we are going into year three next year. But it really is a rollover. It's no longer like the Blue Warner's books that we had as kids, or the Basil Reader that you had. It is more dynamic, which does help with the less cost of manipulatives every year because the books and things keep changing, because it is part of an online base, but it is no longer static for 12 years. If you would remember, we had Reading Street by Scott Forsman that we purchased in 2003 here with a couple of different regimes, and we never updated it, so much so that we never had, and we weren't privy to professional development or curriculum, and that's sort of where we fell apart. So this goal would be, if you have a budget that is fiscally sound and is done correctly, I do believe that you would then have the internal refresh cycles so that you don't have to keep either cutting or coming back every year. Thank you. The other thing, one more thing to add, and then I'm shutting up. Mr. Stanbrook, if we could possibly see another column or two that would show the FY '23 expenditure, and then the difference for FY '24, as you've done on some of the other documents. So it just carries out a couple more tables on this one pager. I think this one pager is wonderful, and I thank you for it. So document one.
Oh, okay. I understand.
Thank you.
Chris?
So I just had a question, George, and you had mentioned Algebra I, II, and Geometry, and something about an open-source program.
Yeah, so, of course, as I said that, I'm trying to rack my brain to figure out which one it is that's named after a person, but open source is free resources that are online. So what happened was, was that Deb Caruso, who's the math curriculum coordinator, applied for the same grant that we applied for from 6 to 8 from the state, and it's called basically an acceleration grant. So the state puts out, you can get a year for free professional development and/or different things if you use these approved pieces. So this, and I'll get you the name, it's simple. But it's, it allows us to use the free resource, the open-source resources, but what it does is it gives you all the manipulatives and the course expectations that now the students can also engage both on their, on their Chromebook and with the manipulatives themselves. So that is what we will do, and it'll allow for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry to be realigned to this company, and I'm sorry, this company's piece, so that we can move forward. It is, when you get to the high school level and beyond, open source is really competing with a lot of different companies for subject-specific things. It doesn't necessarily, hasn't really cracked the nut of K-8, because that's more of the building of literacy and the building of skills as opposed to it's Algebra I.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One quick thing, so I thought Fred was going to go here for sure, but, so when we talk about like the, the investment in, let's say, foreign language through the software, let's just say it's 150,000, and you said that would give us probably like eight years?
So that would be the robotics, so-
Or robotics.
The robotics. For foreign language, it would be 24,000 for both middle schools, and then the on-demand tutoring, which students would have, not just with the teacher, but they could hit the red button and they could get the help there, would be another 4,400.
And is that, so is that, what is one-time versus annual, I guess, is what I'm trying to do?
Sure. So if we look at robotics, you're roughly looking at 55 to 60 about one time.
Okay.
Before they run out. If you're looking at Spanish in this fashion, you're looking at roughly 28, well, not roughly, 28,4 yearly as an expendable.
Got it. So, real quick, so I think like the point that Fred has brought up in the past when it comes to curriculum, I think, was about like, how can we maybe capitalize some of these expenses, right? And so then I'm listening to you, and you're kind of talking about, hey, we should build into the curriculum, and then I'm going back to the comment John Stanbrook made, I don't know, a month or two ago, about, hey, what about borrowings as a way of, you know, capitalizing? So maybe, you know, whether it's some of these pieces, or even the curriculum that you're talking about, if it's going to cost us $100,000 and we know we're going to get five years out of it, we may be better served to say, at least consider, let's borrow the $100,000 over a five-year period, so we know that that's going to be the same cost, we're going to have the same cost every year. And at the end of the five years, guess what? We're going to need another $100, right? But now we kind of build it as part of our operating budget, so we're not doing this crazy like-
Just like we do with Chromebooks. I would completely agree with you on that sense.
Yes.
I think the one, the one thing that Mr. Small has mentioned for the last, I don't know, nine years, was that we let the towns choose as a capital item, and that's the part that I think as an educator I have a problem with. But if we were to do something like debt, or if we were to do something like E and D, then I would agree with you. Then you're looking at a much smaller, instead of $525,000 curriculum line for everything, you're then looking at coming back on a cycle for E and D or debt for our five to six years. you're then looking at coming back on a cycle for E and D or debt for our five to six-year refresh. However, you, the 525 then becomes probably 250 for the manipulatives and what you need every year for instructional materials. I agree completely, as long as this committee and the people who win, who live their lives for education make that decision.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
I'm not asking, you know, when I'm speaking of the towns putting it as a capital item.
Right.
What it does is it takes it out of the operating budget.
Sure. I thought I've heard you say it was, you'd like it to be on a menu and a capital item before.
It's out of the operating budget. It's an item that exceeds the threshold of $5,000.
Yeah.
And has a shelf life of five years or greater.
Right, sure, but it's not a truck.
It needs the definition of capital.
Right.
So that, therefore, and I, it's according to a Desti conference I was at, and many towns have done it this way, it's entirely proper and legal, and that's how they keep the operating budget to be focused.
Sure, and you guys can do whatever you want, I'm just saying.
Keep the capital that way.
As a person who's dedicated my life to school, I don't think that a furnace and a truck and a valve and something that's over $5,000 that's described as capital to be more than five years should be put on a warrant with curriculum.
Yeah, and I think, so, and I think that's where we can kind of maybe revisit the mechanism, but the end result is the same, right? So it's the same point that Hillary was making, to your point on the curriculum of, you know, wait, this isn't, this isn't an initiative, right? This wasn't a duty, this is just part of the program. So if we can think about how to do that, that's a good takeaway. We can think about whether, you know, whether it's borrowed, I know we looked at some of those bond rates and they're not, they're not quite as enticing as they were a few, a few months ago or a couple of years ago. It's a lot more expensive to borrow, but maybe there's a way to borrow from ourselves.
And I think also, if we remember, this is, today is the winter solstice, it's December 21st. We usually used to say that we did budget all spring, so we are ahead of the game and we have already talked about some of these pieces, should that be what the further discussions lead to.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Yeah, thanks for reminding us about last year and that the curriculum was not included. So we made a decision, right, and we made a decision, use one-time E and D. Some of us didn't agree with that, but the majority of the committee did vote, so we, that was all public, you know, everyone knew what we were doing to help out the towns and the assessments. And I was looking back on the district website on the five-year forecast on page three, it has, going back to FY19, 20, 21, all the assessments. And I'm seeing from FY22 to FY23, this budget here, that both Whitman and Hanson total paid an increase of only about $400,000 because they got the savings of the busing. So when you factor in that savings, they, you know, they only pay $400,000 more for this entire budget. We get a lot of state aid, that's a big benefit to the district. So this budget you presented, thank you, is 4%, it's not extravagant. We know, based on other communities, we're not above average or below average, but we're doing a really good job, our staff and so forth, but I think to put forward the real cost of education, I've said that before, right, the real cost, not using one-time funds and not cutting curriculum that we need to have there is super important, so, thank you.
Well, the only other thing too, I don't want to lose sight of, we can definitely do this in budget subcommittee, but I want to make sure the committee's on board with this. I think last year as part of the budget process, we kind of had that cheat with like the Esser funds and kind of went, we need, we can't lose sight of that. So I think you've already alluded to that, but we should have, I don't know if that's in there. If not, we should, yeah. But we gotta get to that point of, right, kind of understanding like, okay, we have this this year, we have this next year, okay, where is that going?
We have, we definitely have a site of September 20th, 30th, and who, who those people are, and then it goes away.
Yes.
Just, uh, real quick, as part of the charge of the budget subcommittee, methodology of how to obtain funds, like you just had a suggestion about borrowing.
Yep.
Uh, if the towns, and I'm gonna try and choose my words carefully, there's a finite amount of money in a finite bucket that they allocate. If they can't reach the demands that we have, do we have a plan B as to how to perhaps ask for those funds to others? Be it the public, you know, in a ballot question or an override, or borrowing, et cetera. I would hope that the budget subcommittee is going to be looking at every single option possible.
So I think until we meet, again, I can't speak for the budget subcommittee, but I think until we meet with the towns to understand kind of that joint conversation where that, I think it would presuppose to have an understanding of what that looks like. I mean, right, at the end of the day, our charge is to kind of figure out, this is what we need. We are completely dependent on the towns, we have no, we don't produce any revenue, like, we don't, there's nothing we can do to really change that, our aid comes from either the state or the towns, that's it. So, I don't know, to me it would be premature to say, here's our plan B, because I haven't, we're not even done with plan A and we haven't presented plan A to anyone. Now, maybe when we get to that point, sure, but I don't think we're there now.
I'm just saying, you have some ideas in the bullpen, so to speak.
Yeah.
Be prepared, be a boy scout.
Like I said, short of us creating a new revenue stream, I don't know what exists. It's state aid or the towns.
But it's not our job, I'm sorry, but it's not our charge to determine the town's finances. Our job is to, our charge is to determine the best services for the students who don't have the voices, who can't go and vote, most of them. And I think it's problematic when we're talking about an override for a budget that hasn't even been presented, and why does it have to be the schools that would tip the scales in that way? We haven't even had that meeting yet. And our job is to look at what services the students need, the cost of education, the services they need, and how we can provide them for them. That's what we have to worry about. We can't worry about all these other things, that's not our job.
Okay, well, I think we had a good preliminary budget discussion, so.
And again, I just wanna, I have to give a shout out to John because this is all, he had to rebuild our system while we were working through it and has produced stuff projected. And he'll be working through January, we're gonna give him some time off to, you know, for Christmas. He gets the day, you know, and New Year's Day, you know? So, but thanks, John, really, you know, it was, it's been well done. The strategic plan, we discussed a little bit last month. We met with our, with Kurt, our, our person, and he would be happy to do a school committee workshop sometime in January, early February. So we were thinking that tonight we can maybe come up with a date, or if that's still what the school committee would like to do, so we could let him know. And he, like I said, he'd be very happy to come and talk to you folks about the process and get your input on our strategic plan for the next five years.
Do you have some dates in mind?
Did he give us any dates or did he just keep it open? No, he left it open-ended because we left it open-ended. I know that the, I believe the ninth is a Monday, so that week he will be in the district at schools for faculty meetings. I think he's gonna be there from Tuesday to Wednesday to Thursday on that week, I believe the ninth is a Monday.
Ninth is a Monday.
Yeah, so I think he's 10th, 11th, and 12th. He's gonna be in district sort of at the end of the day, so possibly that would work. But he said, his words to us were, whatever they need, whenever they'd like to meet, we can definitely do a workshop. And he would take you through basically what he's taking the groups through as part of what's called.
Are we thinking it would be, so are we thinking it would be a weeknight or weekend or we don't know?
I think it would be a weeknight. I think it would be a weeknight.
Okay. So weeknight and we can make anything work, but you're throwing out the week of the night? He's here.
Yeah, he's, he's in the district that week.
Okay, so I'm just looking at, I don't know what we have for other school committee-related meetings, but I know we have RAC Monday and we have school committee Wednesday, so that's two nights.
Building committee.
That's what I was gonna say, that.
Building committee on Tuesday.
So we got building committee on Tuesday, so we got Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
What does, so what week, I guess?
Thursday's the joint meeting.
And Thursday's the joint meeting, so we already have every night.
So I'm thinking that week probably wouldn't be good.
January's tough because we already have so many between the budget meetings.
What about the week of?
We can do the first, well, whatever.
When, I'm looking at your, I gotta, I'm trying to keep up your budget.
February 1st is.
Your budget dates here. February 1st is our public hearing.
And he could also just actually come to a meeting and provide you with the update of what is taking place. This doesn't have, you know what I mean? So I think it's.
Why doesn't he come to the January 11th meeting? Can we put that on that agenda? We're meeting that week anyway, he's gonna be here.
Yeah, hopefully it's at the beginning because sometimes we go.
I just think it depends what we want to do, right? So if we want to invest the time to have the conversation, I mean, like, it just, a past practice shows me, like, tonight was supposed to be budget, we're, we got five things, so.
January's loaded, right?
I think we almost need to find, I'll do whatever you want, but I, my suggestion would be we need to find like a night and just do it.
So, so let me, let me bring you up to speed maybe on what's happened so far. So what, what's happened so far is the group of administrators have met with him, we're forming the rest of the larger team to include parents and students, and then he's going to the individual schools. He's taking all of that information from what's called a SWAT exercise, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we see in the district, and threat is just something that's out there, it's not a bad word. And then he's saying, okay, groups that he works with, what do you think you can get some consensus on for your top two or your top three initiatives based on all this information that you'd like to work with? Then his goal is to put that all together and do what most of you know we have, you'd have the bucket of like communication, you'd have the bucket of curriculum, you'd have the bucket of capital resources, all of that. And then it's like, where do we want to move forward? So it could easily be something where there's an active participation or it's an explanation and just hear your thoughts on what you think the next five years might need for, might mean or need an input for the district. So he's amenable to do whatever it is and whatever amount of active participation or input on the process that you folks need. So it doesn't necessarily have to be connected to the exercise he's doing with everyone if it's more of, here's where we're at, here's our timeline, what are your thoughts, so that he would know then to incorporate it as we move forward.
I think it's that last piece that I just don't want to go too far because if he wants the committee's thoughts and we want to have the committee as a stakeholder, then I just don't want to get, you guys get too far and then it's like, oh, we didn't, oh, this is a totally different direction.
Sure, correct, sure. But I also think a lot of it too would be the, if it's five years, a lot of what's gonna happen are the action steps, which I definitely see, not only the overall, but I definitely see the work that happens in the summer that might play a role in that, and that's like further down the road and yearly. So I would say if it can't be that, if it can't, you know, great if it could be sometime in January, I guess.
So what about like Wednesday, the 25th? We just planned on a one-hour meeting, that's the only thing on the agenda. We don't have a school committee meeting on that Wednesday.
You may not be in Texas that day, I don't know if I leave that day.
We can, if you take us with us and you flew off the jet, I'm sure, the gentleman and we'll all be, we'll all come with you.
You could fly us.
Are you stuck on the 25th?
I just throw out the 25th.
What do we have, the 24th? We have something to do anyway.
No.
You're just looking for birthday cake.
Yeah. 25th.
We have a RAC the 23rd, which is the Monday, I don't know about building committee on the Tuesday, but I'm just thinking the Wednesday. We just limit it for an hour. Only thing on the agenda, that's all we're doing, we come in, we do this.
6:30, Glenn, Glenn, 6:30.
Any Wednesday.
Any Wednesday.
Does that work? Everyone good with that? Do we want to do it that way?
We'll reach out to Kurt and see if we can do that. That'd be great.
I'll try and book my flight. No, I haven't booked it yet.
Although, I just know, I, somebody, I was just, I had to go back in Texas, they said the weather wasn't that great, so we'll, we'll hold out until you take us to like, yeah, we'll hold out until you take us to like Hawaii or California or something, Fred.
Thanks, George.
All right, awesome.
Whitman Middle School, please, Mr. Small?
Okay, got some good news. Santa Claus came early.
Yes.
We had a meeting yesterday morning, Jeff, myself, Mr. Lamatina, Frank Lineham, and our project manager, John Bates from Colliers, with the executive director of MSBA, Jack McCarthy and his staff. He had, oh, and the town's lawyer, Nancy Campagnes, was in attendance for us. Jack had two attorneys and all his people there. It was a brief, very nice meeting. He understands what the town's concerns are. He ended up saying, I don't have a problem with that. What he wants is just unfettered access during construction and something in writing that says should there need to be a repair in the future, that there would be unfettered access, you know, protecting MSBA's rear end. All sounds totally reasonable, two attorneys are drawing everything up, it's not done until it's signed, but I would say it's getting done, so, great news there. And then this morning, and even better news, the MSBA board of directors met and they were looking at the allowable reimbursement per square foot. So even though they give us and say, hey, you're at 55% reimbursement, they limit you to a dollar amount per square foot in construction costs and other expenses. It was at $360 currently. They increased it to $393 and they did put a kicker in, and I'm not sure exactly the formula, but for site work, those amounts went up as well. So while the percentage may stay the same, even though they say, hey, it's 50-something percent, and then if you drill it all down, you're anywhere from 40 to 47, maybe, you know, it's not quite as low, so to speak. You get a little bit more of their money, so the ultimate percentage is a little bit better, so.
Good news.
So good news. So just to add on to that, we, George and I had a conference call with the commissioner last week and MSBA came up. And towns and cities that are in project right now with signed contracts with MSBA are getting nothing. These are for future, which we haven't signed a contract for, future due to inflation costs. So we're kind of right in the right spot at the right time because some cities and towns are down 10, 15 million dollars in costs and have to go back to their towns to get those costs. Commissioner said advocate with your legislators, see if there's any, any way around that, but, and they've also, what he said, MSBA is not gonna be accepting as many schools into projects until they catch up. So we're hopefully at the right place at the right time right now moving forward with our project, so.
Yeah, and they said that they need to look at regions because they are.
Unique.
They are unique. And my comment is they always offer every single thing and that's what made it easier to get that done.
Good.
Just let them go to the top, that's all.
So the last thing on our agenda, and I think you and I can speak to, we met with the regional, the agreement team and we were asked, they were asked to go back to their boards to talk about the regional agreement and what you would like to see discussed. So we kind of wanted to do it, you know, in an open session, kind of wanted to do an executive session so that both towns aren't watching what your concerns might be, but we can't do that. So we have an open session here to talk about, in your packet was the original agreement, the agreement from 2019 or 2018 that was worked on and passed and then not passed and not passed at all, and then the amendment that we made in 2020 for, for the assessment methodology. So I think what we'd like to talk here or get some thoughts are what you would like us to focus as a committee or what your concerns are in the regional agreement so we can have those discussions. And I think Chris's goal, moving out to that, I want to speak for him, is getting the things out in the open right up front and not working on the minutia, working on the hard things first.
Exactly, so, right, I think you have the documents, but I don't think it's, hey, you know, on page three, line 32, can we change, right? I think it's more of, you know, are there topics that as a committee we think we should be bringing up with all the parties to have a conversation about, hey, we need to relook at this? So do you have any of those? Yes, Chris?
The one item that I'm sure is going to come up is the definition of a capital cost.
Okay.
And what is, what is considered to be a emergency repair or an extraordinary repair?
Okay.
I think that needs to be defined very clearly, especially, you know, with the mold incident from last year of Whitman Middle, you know, there were feelings, different things back and forth, so I think we need crystal clear clarification on that. As far as the threshold for a capital expense, it's at $5,000 right now. I don't know that it needs to be raised at all because otherwise we're taking it out of our own operating budget. $5,000 repair is a good-sized repair anyways. Anything over that would go to the town, you know, for them to reimburse us. And I think that's just fair.
Good points. Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
I would, to build on the capital, I think some other regional school districts actually put it in their operating budget, the capital, so I didn't know if that's a discussion point over how to handle it at step one, regardless of the $5,000 of the threshold, simply that the regional school district, you're responsible to pay it. So budget accordingly, and it's assessed annually to the towns, just a capital line. And we manage it. I'm not saying that that's just something to consider. And then second, I think, is because we alluded to it earlier, the busing.
Transportation.
Yeah, transportation.
Okay. I was waiting for that. Someone has to bring that up.
Well, yeah.
Because I think, again, we looked at the agreement and we've interpreted, but I think let's just have crystal clear clarity of, this is the intent, this is how it's going to work, this is how it's going to be. Good one. Yes?
I just think, you know, and we've talked about this and in general, to look it over a little more carefully to be able to say succinctly, this is what it means. Not, this is what they think and this is what we think. There were so many of those that we've come across that I think, you know, that's what your job in that committee is to really relook and make sure the words are appropriate and are understood by all sides. Because even before I was on committee, I mean, I would listen and I'm there like, oh, come on, you know? I understood that to be this, but it was understood to be that, you know? So I think just in general, that to me has been a problem from day one with the agreement. Because so many things did change and everything. Some of it was very obvious, like the taking the schools out, that were no longer existent, that type of thing. But I think, you know, it's got to be more succinct, succinct, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
I'd say like, probably following Beth here, it's just the interpretation. And, you know, sometimes you're reading it and I could be sitting beside Beth and she may be totally thinking something different, or Chris might be. You know, and I know there's a lot of that, and I know a lot of things have to say pursuant to this or, you know, citing certain state laws or whatever, but as best as we can do. And I think it really makes it more readable and accessible to people. No one's trying to get an interpretation of what it is.
The English language is a wonderful thing. If we all think the same way, but that's might be asking a lot because I think we're all going to think.
It's not chaste, but it, you know.
Plushing some of that out, yeah, that's good feedback.
Thank you.
Anything else? Brett?
I just.
Or, sorry, Hillary, hold on, Hillary and then Brett.
So there's three documents in here.
Yes, should be the.
91.
The 91 one is the one I'm looking at?
The 91.
The typewriter one?
Yep, that's one of them.
There's like handwritten comments, literally like that are binding, I think, in a little, in a couple spots.
And you probably hear this too, being a member from Hanson, but there's always conversation about the makeup of the committee.
Yeah.
If you, I don't know if everybody has read this, but this talks about an elementary school committee in here. And I don't know if that was ever null and void, so like, we need to scratch that because that's not here.
Well, yeah, no, so remember the original agreement took the towns from kind of where they were to where.
Okay, so, and so that's what this whole rig sort of thing is here?
Right, so basically like there was a Whitman, right, there was a Whitman School Committee and there was Hanson School Committee, and they kind of had to merge them together. So I think some of that is in there. Obviously that wouldn't need to happen anymore because.
So, but, right, but.
But yes, but there's some stuff in there.
Right, but there's stuff in there. So, and in the one that, the 2018 one that was not voted in, it talks about the appropriation of members based on population.
Yes.
So that language should be in because the, like, I don't, it's not going to ever go the sixth, I can't imagine it'll be seven-three because that would give one town a majority, and I would just be concerned about that because that's the, you know, being the, one of the four members, that's something that I hear a lot, even though all of our big votes needed two-thirds vote, so we need seven people anyway. So just, just understanding that, and if we're going to put the population in, there should be a clause that should say that you can't give one town a majority because then we're, I mean, and we all know, we don't vote like that anyway, but that's just going to open a can of worms that we don't need to deal with if you're doing a new thing. So I would just pay attention to that language.
So we can definitely look at representation. I think that's definitely, just several folks that have brought that up. And then I think the piece that's really important with representation, and this is what that group is going to have to get into, is there a state law that clearly articulates, here are the five ways you can do it?
Yes.
So it's not, it's, so we probably have already thinking about this conversation. Like, to me, it's almost like we have, we need to have a conceptual conversation of like, this is going to be dangerous, but put the law aside, what we want to do. And then once we kind of figure out that, now we got to either figure out like, are we going to try and lobby to change the law because we don't want to do it this way? Or we got to fit into one of these five options? Because even if we say, even if we all conceptually agree this is what we want to do, it still may not be something we can do. So it's, that's a messy one, but yes, that's.
But I just, in the 2018 one, it alludes to the members will be based on town population or not even town population, student population, and it could be 70/30. And that would not, that is not what we, I mean, from a.
What page is that on that one?
The, the old one that I'm looking at?
No, the 2018.
The 2018 one, it's right.
I'm scrolling and.
It's on the top. It's B, Part B of Section 2, A, powers duties.
First page?
Um, I'm sorry, it's, hold on, let me see. Where is it? I just saw it. Now I can't see it because I just, oh, yeah, it's, I'm sorry. It's Section 2, Part A, number 1A. 10 members based on the population of the member towns at the time of amending this regional agreement. So even that has that clause that's like, it's not going to change here. So I just know that that's something that we hear.
Representation, absolutely.
You know, and being aware that, you know.
Brett?
And don't hold me to be 110% accurate here, but I recall some discussion with the folks from ours. And one of the other ways they said it can be done, but what it would change is the weight of the vote.
Yeah, there's five, there's five, there's five. So we'll go through, there is five ways within the law. It's like the weight of, so it's like, I think the way they explain it is like, it's under a mass law principle of one person, one vote, and how representative votes get canceled or counted rather. So, you know, you could even have like 10 members from each, but then you start weighting the votes where, you know, you still only get, this group still only counts for 40%, this group still only counts for 60%. So if you're in this 10, you know, your vote counts for whatever the heck that is, you know? 10, 4%, and in this group it counts for 6%, like, so.
We spend half a night.
Like, God, we need, right, right, like who voted where? That's one, there's, but there are five options.
Okay, so.
And we'll go through them.
The other thing is, I'd want to caution about putting capital costs into the operating budget. You know, a hot water heater. You know, the water heater, I know a few years back was $24,000 at Whitman Middle. And I think that one of the elementaries, it was the, you know, same cost. It's a lot of money to eat out of your operating budget for a sudden expense. You know, a dishwasher, a piece of kitchen equipment.
Yeah. All food for thought. Anyone else?
We'll follow up on the, through you, Jay, to Hillary, the population of the member towns. So I believe that's actually the town-wide population of nine to 10.
Fascinating.
Yeah, so that would never shift quickly enough that this committee would become seven to three, like you, I don't.
It could. Think about all the new houses and developments in Whitman. Like, you know what I mean? Like Hanson, we're not building new things. I just, I would just be concerned, I'm just saying, like, speaking from what I hear out in Hanson and the public, like, this is a concern. So that's all, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree with you. It's a concern. I just think there's less volatility where it's, you know, the population of the town versus the population of the students in the school district.
And I think that's where, that's where it's, there's something in like the Commonwealth Constitution that talks about one person, one vote, and I think that's where that derives from. So if you have 10,000 here and you have 15,000 over here, you got to figure out a way to make that equivalent. So like, that is, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but part of it is like, I'm not sure, again, how, unless we want to, and we may land there, change the law. You might kind of get stuck because it's just, it's kind of like, when we go to elections, like California's going to get more. It's not, Massachusetts doesn't get the same votes as California when it comes to, you know, some of the electoral. Like, it's just kind of the way it works.
The same, but not really.
So folks watching, this is Chapter 71, Section 14.
14, yeah, we'll go through it. We'll go through it.
Yeah, so that'll be part of it.
Yeah. Other items? And that's a fairly healthy list, so.
How about free parking?
Free parking?
We already offer it. Seniors.
I only charge you, Steve.
I wonder why that space was blown.
I only charge you.
All right, well, that's good. That is helpful. So our next school committee meeting is January 11th. We have a regional agreement committee meeting that Monday. It sounds like we have building on the Tuesday. We have the joint meeting on Thursday. So everyone have a safe and happy holiday and a happy new year, and then we'll be back at it come January.
No doubt to adjourn.
Please, thank you. Second? All those in favor? All right, have a great night. Thank you, everyone.
How did the sound system work?